Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting for Bernice Springs Fire Control and Rescue District, Monday, July 8th, 2019, to order. Please rise for an invocation from Chef from Chipwood.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for five firefighters across the US who lost their lives this last month. And after the silence, we'll pray. Dear God, we come tonight and we give you thanks for another day of life. And as we stop and reflect on those who've lost their lives this past month, serving others, Lord, we pray that you'll be with their families and watch over them and guide them. Lord, it also reminds us how precious life is and the blessings we have each and every day. Let us never take that for granted of those that care for us and love us. Lord, we pray you will protect our own firefighters and their families, watch over them, guard them, and protect them each and every day. Thank you for the freedom we share and that we enjoy each and every day in this nation and those that protect it and serve and give us many privileges. Thank you for that. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands as one nation under God, equal and just, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve June meeting minutes, June 3rd, 2019 minutes.
So moved.
as well.
Second?
She was hired with Ashley.
All in favor?
She's not present at the moment, but once again, I wanted to thank her for years of
Aye.
service, her one year of service.
Aye. One motion for the June 2019 incurred expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial
And at this time, we'll do the Assistant Chief.
report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between account and budgeted
Assistant Chief Greg DeWitt has 30 years of service. Thirty years of service.
purchases orders over $10,000.
I did want to mention something.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I know he's back there, he's a jack-of-all-trades, he's back there running the media center.
All in favor?
Aye.
But Assistant Chief, when I first met Assistant Chief DeWitt, he was involved with the union
Presentations. Chief?
Yes, sir. We're just gonna move, if you have the agenda, we're just gonna move the Assistant Chief and also he was, has always been a highly dedicated employee throughout his career. down to the bottom.
She's here.
In fact, when I was on the line, Assistant Chief and myself never worked together for First off. Yes, I know.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So, we'll start with Administrative Assistant Ashley Pounders. 16 or 17 years, whatever it was, we never worked a shift together. I don't know if she's here, I did not see her. There she is. The only time we ever had, we didn't start working together until he got promoted to One year of service.
Yay.
Ashley's done a fantastic job for us and has moved office positions a couple times Deputy Chief at the time. Many of you know him, especially the board, and the hard work that he does. and is a great team player here. We're happy to have her. He's pretty much well-rounded in almost every single aspect of this fire district and knows Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
this fire district better than anybody, except me, of course.
I put my hand.
But I just wanted to thank the Assistant Chief for his 30 years of incredible service. He's a great public servant and a good friend. And if you'd come up here, please, Assistant Chief. Chairman, if I may say something?
Absolutely. I've been here a short time, but the more I work with Assistant Chief DeWitt, the more I'm amazed at his knowledge and his capability and his desire to really help. I mean, he volunteers for stuff that most people keep walking away from, so he's really appreciated. Thank you.
I think we all share that opinion. I'll get out. I'm glad he's not the head of the union anymore, that's all I gotta say.
Item B, pinning ceremony. We have probationary firefighter Caleb Sparks, if you want to come up for your pinning. And who's gonna pin you? Joe, come on up.
(inaudible). Can't see blood.
You'd think Joe never put a badge on before.
Congratulations to all. We want to take a couple of minutes usually at this point. If anybody would like to leave and not stay for the whole meeting, we can, we can let you go. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome. Next item is Commissioner's business, and we have an item under there about the naming of the Station 21 Park. Anybody want to have some discussion about that?
Yes, sir. I was gonna make a motion tonight to approve the naming of the park, and I wanted to, the name was important because I wanted to be in line with Chief Daigle's vision. He initially came up with the whole idea and it's turned out beautifully. Couldn't look any better. And I think a fitting name would be the Chief Joseph Daigle, Commissioner Stephen Lohan of Reflection Park. And if everybody's in agreement with that, there were several names bandered around, but I think that is something that the Chief liked himself. And although you didn't want this honor, we're bestowing it on you anyways, hopefully. And the Chairman for all his hard work. And that would be the official name, and there would be a nice plaque like we do at the firehouses commemorating the park inside the park, and people could go there and just reflect, remember fallen firefighters, 9/11, personal problems or tragedy, or just enjoy the beautiful foliage that's there. All the residents of Bernice can utilize it.
I'm obviously not gonna be part of this vote, and you need it.
I have no problem with that. I'm behind it all the way. As long as they accept the honor, and I'm glad to give it to them.
So, Chairman, could we go ahead and vote on that?
Yes, I'm obviously not gonna vote on it.
Can I have a motion?
I think we already have two votes, I'll make a three.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay.
On that subject, I understand you have talked to the city about removing the 9/11...
Well, in fact, that's under my section of Commissioner's business.
I beat you to it.
No, I'm just saying, I was gonna start down there and see if Commissioner Murphy had anything.
I want to congratulate the union for the 4th of July parade once again. I have a little concern about it because it's turned into a little bit of a water park. And I know a lot of dignitaries may not wish to ride in the parades in the future. There's these large water cannons the kids have, and they're spraying the mayor...
The water balloons.
Water balloons. And if we just need a water park, let's understand that's what it is and that's what we'll go to. But we can't really invite City Council, the mayor, the sheriff, and other dignitaries to come to something like that and be treated that way. So, we have to figure out some way to make this a respectable parade in the future, or let's just turn it into a water park parade. That's my comment.
Well, to add to that, the biggest concern that a lot of people have is not getting wet, it's the equipment in the cars and the vehicles and the police cars and, you know, it's like, and a lot of the people riding convertibles, and, you know, I don't think people would like us walking over and throwing a bucket of water in their car, and I can understand where it's a problem, I just honestly don't, I don't see what the solution is unless we go down with all our hoses and just let it rip to fight back, but it's kind of a hard thing to control. But I do know that anybody in a sedan and the police cars and everybody had their windows up, but it's kind of hard to do that when you're riding in an open vehicle, so I understand your point. Commissioner, so...
Just to continue that, I was in a convertible, and there was a middle-aged woman with a cooler full of water balloons. She hit me, she hit my dog, she hit my wife driving the car, and got in my convertible. I asked her to stop and she just ignored me, so I don't know what the thrill is. I mean, it was just out of control as far as I was concerned. I just think we should do what we can to control it, otherwise, I'm not riding in the car with convertible anymore.
Was she related to your ex-wife?
She may have been with your ex-wife.
If I may, sir, President Brad Brown's here, so I'm sure he'll address that as well with the, with his parade, well, the union's parade, so.
It was a good parade.
I did it to Chief with a piece of candy, though. I did hit him.
You did hit me with a piece of candy.
We just gotta start throwing bigger pieces of candy. No, and I, you're never gonna fix it, and I guess, you know, doing a public service announcement isn't gonna do any good because the people that do it aren't gonna understand.
It's gotten worse, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has.
It seems to be in one section only, like a little before the grandstand, you know, where the grandstand is, and maybe if the police were in that area telling people, I don't know, I'm just...
Unless, unless we have some of the volunteers and some of the guys that are working for us, or for you guys, I should say, do a little more patrol during the parade, and if they see it getting out of hand, make a comment, hey, please, we ask you not to do that. I mean, that would be the, that'd be the simplest solution, and I guess if it got ugly, then that's what the cops are here for, but, you know, you don't want to do that. It's a parade, it's a fun for the city, but, you know, when they're starting to do some things that can destroy some expensive equipment, then we have a right to kind of put an end to it. Commissioner Maturro?
I'd just like to thank the union for the, I thought my truck was being pelted with rocks, it was water balloons.
And likewise, I would like to thank the union. It was, as usual, fantastic job. The other item I want to talk about this evening is that for the new park, we still have the monument that is over at the Lyles Hotel, and it belongs to us, but it's on city property, and I have been having a pretty good dialogue with our Vice Mayor, and he actually even sent me the whole email chain today. I've had like three emails today, and I've talked to him on the phone a couple of times. It's going on, they don't have two, the City Council doesn't have two meetings this month for some reason, but the next meeting, I believe, is Greg, the 18th, or...
Right around there.
Yeah, right around there, and it's green-cheated, but at the last meeting, the Vice Mayor brought it up, and he felt that he had the verbal approval for us to move the monument over to our park. And having said that, I'm anticipating that that is going to be the case, so now, we have to throw the ball back to you guys to make it happen. At least figure out the logistics of how it's gonna get done, and I'm sure that every one of us here would be happy to help with it. You know, it's kind of got a special place in all of our hearts because Paul Phillips went up and brought that piece back from Kennedy Airport, and I think it's a very, I think we should even have some kind of a ceremony while we're moving it, not just pick it up and walk it down the street or whatever we're gonna do. I think it maybe should be done with a little bit of dignity, just my opinion.
I agree.
So, we'll be more than happy to help with that in any way we can, and I'm sure that it's probably gonna cost a few dollars, but I'm fairly sure that, I'm fairly sure that we should be able to do that, and I think, so that at least this year for the 9/11 ceremony, it will be in that park. And it's been a while coming, and I think it's kind of gonna be a special place.
Yes, sir. I can reflect on when we actually brought the piece in, we put it on the back of our truck, our antique truck, and we had some pomp and circumstance with it. I anticipate something similar like that with a, you know, public announcement.
Matter of fact, if I remember right, we had that, his name escapes me now, but the former New York City cop, motorcycle cop.
Yes.
He was, he actually escorted that, I remember that.
Yes. So, we'll do something in the similar vein to give it the proper respect it deserves.
So, now, you know, you just get the ball rolling and setting that up, it's, you know, I mean, it does, it seems like it's a lifetime away, but, you know, 9/11 will be here like before we realize it, so...
Yes, sir.
Like I said, unless there's an issue with the board, but I can't imagine there will be. Okay, I think that pretty much sums it up. All right, the next, under old business, Board Seat 2. I guess to give a little history on it, when a seat becomes open on the board, state law says that the board, as a group, can appoint somebody to fill the term until the next election, which will be November of '20. We have an internal policy that says that we have to advertise it, an interview of candidates, and then pick one. I personally don't like the policy, and here's why. We've had, on different occasions, we've had four, five, as many as six people, all superbly qualified, and we can only pick one, and I feel like we've probably slapped a few people that didn't deserve to be slapped. Not that they wouldn't do a good job, but after the interview process, plus it's a little bit demeaning to sit there, all of us asking questions of people that have resumes that are pretty strong, and asking them, I think it's demeaning to the candidate to some degree that wants the job. That's just one opinion here. And soon, when you make your decision, there's gonna be somebody that's gonna have a little bit of a hard feeling that you, why didn't you pick me? And having said that, if we change, we can change that policy right now. I mean, we can just, and we could still do that, but we don't have to have it in a written policy. If we don't have, and then the other question comes up, what happens if nobody applies for it? You know, you advertise it and nobody wants it. So, my point is that, to me, it would, I know there's been one person that has shown some, a fair amount of interest in the position. He served on City Council for eight years. He was the liaison between City Council and the Fire Department for all those eight years, and was at the lion's share of our meetings. He's done a huge amount of work for the veterans in this town, and he's shown a, he's shown a very solid interest in filling the term on the board, and his name is, I think we all know him, Steve Slackta. I haven't talked to Steve about it in quite a while. I know he's been in touch with administration and things, but without any kind of a policy change, that's just, that's one guy's opinion again, but I know in the past, and I've been through several of these, you always kind of feel afterwards, when you run into these people socially, and they look at you, you go, well, you SOB, you didn't pick me, and it's like, you know, you can only pick one person, and it kind of puts us all in an uncomfortable...
I kind of like it.
Well, yeah, because you got picked.
He got picked over me, so I'm not sure I do like it. But actually, three of us have gone through this procedure, they're sitting on this board right now. It's obviously worked. We, I believe we've got a pretty good board. I like the people around this board, I think they're all qualified. The procedure hasn't hurt us, the policy hasn't hurt us. I think you're picking a good candidate, but I think we should evaluate all candidates who are interested in the job and not preordain somebody.
I'm kind of, yeah, I'm going both ways, but I think, I like, I like the fact that I was, could come and tell everybody my background and give my, from my mouth to their ears, my experience and what I could do for the district, and I kind of liked it, I thought it was important.
Well, the flip side of that is you can still do that, you can still do that and have the process, but we won't be required to do it if we don't have anybody that has applied for the job. That could still be an option, but it's not mandatory, and I spoke with our attorney when we were at the conference, and it was free, we didn't, there was no legal fees for it, and he very clearly laid out that most boards do just do an appointment, and he said if you, you know, he knows because he's our attorney as well as FASDs. The point there was that if you still wanted to do the process of advertising, that you could, but the way our, the way we have it written in our, we have to do it.
So, what the Chairman's saying is it just gives us more flexibility?
I guess, thank you, that summarizes, that the flexibility issue there is more of a, it kind of takes some of the, what I feel is the personal front away from the people that are very qualified that we don't appoint. But if there's no motion to change it, then we'll just leave it the way it is, and we go with that.
I would like to table this until the next meeting, or perhaps postpone is the better word, to give us an idea of exactly how to change the policy, what wording we'd want to use.
We could even, we could actually even leave that to an either-or. We could leave it in there and just put an either-or. Either the board will appoint somebody, or at such time, we'll do the interview process. And that gives us, that's...
It's an amendment?
It's just an amendment, it puts us, puts us in a place where if, if we have the option.
If I may, sir?
Yes.
We can amend the policy if the board votes now to do so and add that language. Either the board gets to choose to either appoint or to advertise. That way, next month, the board can vote.
Well, that, and the reason that if we did that at tonight's meeting, then by next, hopefully by next meeting, we'd be able to appoint somebody, you know, rather than table it for another month, and, or, we also have the option where we don't have to appoint anybody and just leave it for people until, until the election. I'm not personally in favor of leaving an empty seat when there's only four of us because it puts us in a situation where we can have a two-to-two vote, and I don't think there's a board, any board, you should put yourself in a situation where you could end up with a tie. It doesn't represent the district or the people of the district fairly to have us in a situation where we'd be deadlocked. Having said that, like I said, I'm one guy.
I'll make the motion that we postpone to next month to have the proper wording reviewed.
I'll second it, but on the question.
Go ahead, there's discussion.
I, I don't know what, I thought the wording would be very simple, either-or. We have a, an appoint, we can appoint or go with the wording that's already written. So, I don't know if we're researching, you know, why we need to research, that's my question.
I would like to, I would like, if we're gonna put a new policy into effect, I think it needs a little more thought than just an either-or.
Well, do you, is your motion to just change the language or to change the whole policy?
Wouldn't that be doing the same thing?
No, it would just be adding an addendum to the policy rather than change, actually doing away with the policy.
Okay, that's what you're referring to, that we have the right to do it, is that what you're saying?
Yes. If we do the and/or, we can do an addendum to the, to that policy, and we can do that right now, and then we, still stays the same, it just gives us another avenue. If we do away with the policy, then we have, we can do that too, but then it eliminates it, whereas this way, it just gives you an asterisk next to it.
If I may, sir?
Yes, sir.
One point I believe we talked about as well, is we can still take applications and the board does not have to interview.
Yeah.
They can just choose an applicant, instead of, like the Chairman was saying...
In a public, in a public setting, you're asking people some questions and, you know, it's kind of, it's always been uncomfortable for me when we've been through that, you know...
So, are you suggesting we just eliminate the interview process?
Yes. Which would, that one, that one addendum to it would do that.
But we have the option.
We have the option, if we get eight great candidates and we don't know which one to pick, that gives us the option, but then again, if we, if we don't want to get in a situation where we got two people, or three people batting heads against it, you know, when people want to serve the community...
I'm not sure that I would have voted for Commissioner Maturro over another candidate if I hadn't heard what he had to say first.
God bless you, sir.
I voted no.
Hey, Larry's here. I don't know, you know, we don't need to overthink it, but we do need to make a decision tonight because we've got to replace the person on the board and...
Well, we have a motion to defer it till next month, so I'll call that question.
I just gotta take a vote on it. You seconded it for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
After the discussion is no. After the discussion, just had I say no, I'd rather just put the or, the or.
Yeah.
It just gives us a little more freedom.
I just want to, I don't want to wait another month. It's not that I have an issue with...
Well, then the motion's defeated, we need a new motion.
I'll make a motion to add the air stick, to make an amendment, that, as we talked about, that will give us the air stick, that gives us the choice if we want to do it. We still take their applications. If we decide, if there's someone that stands out, we can appoint them, if not, we do just what Commissioner Murphy says, and we sit there and we interview them and we pick the best candidate, that, from the interview process. It just gives us the option now.
Okay, I would just like to clarify, there's actually three options. There's the option the board can just pick a candidate by name, discuss it, and pick a candidate by name. The second is to take applications, do interviews, and then choose after the interview process is done. And the third is take applications, provide no interview, and the board chooses by the application.
Well, as of right now, you were the one that reviews the applications, which technically should not be the case, when you really stop and think about it, because you're actually interviewing somebody that you're, you're looking at resumes to decide who your boss is, okay? And this isn't a personal thing.
That's not...
No, you bring it to the board, but you, you screen all the applications to make sure everybody qualifies.
I do not look at them, I do not look at them for qualifications, I look at them just to make sure that the application is completed properly.
Well, our policy doesn't state that. It says it will be, it will be reviewed by administration and then given to the board. I'm not picking the right pepper here, okay? But at the end of the day, if we're making a policy change, you know, I don't think we want to look at the resumes until you, somebody has gone over them and said, okay, here's the ones that we've narrowed down, but at the end of the day, we should probably, if we're going to stick with the interview process, whether, we should probably just take, accept them all, assuming that they meet the residency requirement, which is probably the only thing that we need to verify and go from there. Again, I'm gonna go back to my original statement, that it sometimes leaves a bad taste in some of the applicant's mouth, that they thought, and obviously, they wouldn't have applied for the job if they didn't think they were the person for it, and when you have several people, somebody's gonna be...
Wait till they have to run for election, and that's one of the questions we ask, is are you willing to run? And how are you gonna know that answer if you don't have an interview? I'm not sure that I would have voted for Commissioner Maturro over another candidate if I hadn't heard what he had to say first.
God bless you, sir.
I voted no.
Hey, Larry's here. I, I don't know, you know, we don't need to overthink it, but we do need to make a decision tonight because we've gotta replace the person on the board and.
Well, we have a motion to defer it till next month. So I'll call that question.
I just gotta take a vote on it. You second it up for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
After the discussion is no.
Hmm?
After the discussion, we decide, I say no. I'd rather just put the or, the or.
Yeah.
It ju, it just gives us a little more freedom.
I just wanna, I don't wanna wait another month. It's not that I have an issue with.
Then the motion is defeated. We need a new motion.
I'll make a motion to, to, to add the air stick, to make an amendment, that, as we talked about, that will give us the air stick. It gives us the choice if we want to do it. We still take their applications. If we decide, if there's someone that stands out, we can appoint them. If not, we do just what Commissioner Murphy says. And we sit there and we interview them and we pick the best candidate. That, from the interview process. It just gives us the option now.
Okay, I would just like to clarify, there's actually three options. There's the option, the board can just pick a candidate by name, discuss it and pick a candidate by name. The second is to take applications, do interviews, and then choose after the interview process is done. And the third is take applications, provide no interview, and the board chooses.
Well, as of right now, you, you are the one that reviews the applications, which technically should not be the case.
Yes, sir.
When you really stop and think about it, because you're actually interviewing somebody that you're, you're looking at resumes to decide who your boss is. Okay, and this isn't a personal thing.
That's not.
No, you, you bring it to the board, but you, you screen all the applications to make sure everybody.
I do not look at them, I do not look at them for qualifications. I look at them just to make sure that the application is completed properly.
Well, our policy doesn't state that. It says it will be, it will be reviewed by administration and then given to the board. I'm, I'm not picking the fly pepper here, okay? But at the end of the day, if we're making a policy change, you know, I, I don't think we want to look at the resumes until you, somebody has gone over them and said, okay, here's the ones that we've narrowed down. But at the end of the day, we should probably, if we're going to stick with the interview process, whether, we should probably just take, accept them all, assuming that they meet the residency requirement, which is probably the only thing that we need to verify and, and go from there. Again, I'm gonna go back to my original statement that it sometimes leaves a bad taste in some of the applicant's mouth that they thought, and obviously, they wouldn't have applied for the job if they didn't think they were the person for it. And when you have several people, somebody's gonna be.
Wait till they have to run for election. And that's one of the questions we ask, is are you willing to run and how are you gonna know that answer if you don't have an interview?
You, you were defeated to an interview.
Let me ask you this. Maybe we're complicating this more, but when we, if we, and I hadn't thought about all those plans. It was either leave it the way it was or give us the option to just appoint somebody, which is what our council suggested that we do. And, and I personally think it's a better idea, but it doesn't matter. I wasn't thinking about, but maybe when, if you're, if we are gonna stay with the advertising, then maybe a questionnaire could go out with the resume. Are you willing to run for the term? If you're appointed this term, do you have the plan on running in 2020? Because we all feel, I'm fairly sure that we all feel of, pretty strongly about if you're going to take the seat for the next fourteen or fifteen months, we want you to run for the seat. I mean, you, you would want to put somebody into that position that wants to stay here and help. I don't think you want to just stick somebody in there and then have them get fourteen months' experience and then start over with somebody that. So I, I think that it's almost a no-brainer that most people, as a matter of fact, in, in my memory, I only had one person that just wanted the seat and wasn't gonna run, but it was a political move so that they had a stepping stone to go on for another political position. But I don't think I've ever had anybody say that they weren't gonna run for the seat. Maybe you guys can remember, but I think everybody that applied said, yes, they would run, so.
And we also had some people that said they'd run and didn't.
Yeah, I don't remember who they had.
The more we discuss this side, the more I, I like going to the old option of getting resumes and having interviews because I learn about the person face-to-face and I kinda like that. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
The more I think about it.
All right, let's just leave this, let's leave the policy as is and advertise it and go with it. That's probably the easiest way. We won't, we won't do any addendums to it. Was there, there wasn't a second motion, a second?
There wasn't a motion.
Yeah, okay. Need a motion for disposal of assets.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget transfer motion?
One second, please. Can you make a motion to say that the seat is vacant? Because it has not been determined until tonight.
Yeah, very good point. Very good point. Yeah, we need a motion to, to make sure that the seat is vacant because.
I'll make a motion that we find that the seat is currently vacant.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to do a little cleanup on that, by law, if you miss three, it's a law that if you miss three meetings unexcused with no phone calls, you, you lose your position. So, that's a state law. Obviously, there's several others that you have to live in the district, but the fact that he hasn't been here for three meetings, then he's legally under the state law.
Chairman, may I ask you a question? Has Mr. Fench Gerald still been getting paid by the state for not being here?
I believe he has.
Thank you.
Budget transfer motion?
Excuse me, while we're still on it, does he have any equipment or personal, any items that belong to the district that he should be returning?
That would be an.
Did he get the iPad back?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
He did return the iPad according to Chris.
Uh, budget transfer motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now have to select the tentative millage rate, which simply states that we cannot make it higher. This is not to exceed millage. We can make it lower. I think the staff recommendation at our budget workshop is to leave the millage of where it is. And we can always come down from there. We can't go up. But that was staff recommendation. I thought we were all pretty much in agreement with that when we were at the budget workshop, so just need a motion.
I'll make the motion that the millage rate not exceed two, three, one.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have our surplus, our boat, that we're, Fort Myers Shores Fire Department is requesting to purchase our own old Marine twenty-seven. And I'm sorry if I blow this name. Chief Dewalaby? Is that it? Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't want to butcher the name. Is, is here to request, and somebody can, he can come up and speak and somebody can fill in all the details for the board so we can say yea or nay?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to represent Fort Myers Shores community in front of you. I started at Fort Myers Beach Fire Department in nineteen eighty-one, so I've had a nice up-close view of the, the Benita Springs Fire Department and the growth that it's happened. And if you were to drive your vehicle out to Fort Myers Shores, you would kinda see Benita Springs in nineteen ninety-one. Lots of expansion gonna happen. We have a state road that's gonna be a six-lane road in the next ten years. We have a thirty-one extension going up to Babcock Ranch. There's gonna be a new dual-span bridge that is gonna accommodate up to eight lanes so that there'll be future ability for it to, to grow as that area grows. So we're real excited about that. Just at this point, you know, the finances aren't quite where they are. So we currently have a nineteen-foot Carolina skiff with no fire pump on it. And in talking with Chief Scott and Chief DeWitt, found out that you were looking at the new boat. We recently joined in training efforts with the, the community that, that represents the waterway. And our guys are really involved and they would look forward to an opportunity to go ahead and take your boat. We realize that there's some work to do on it. Our commission realizes we can't afford to get something new, even with a fifty-fifty grant. So I've been authorized to come here today and offer twenty-five thousand dollars for your boat and willing to take any questions that you have. Our intent is real good, and one of the things that I'm most proud about from the time I started to what I see now is this thing we call operational consolidation. You know, it's allowed for mutual aid and automatic aid responses. And I look at this as one of those things, you know, people from Benita Springs are gonna travel the river. And the ability to have a better vehicle than what we have kinda relates to that operational consolidation. Yet, you know, we've all maintained our autonomy.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of it staying here in Lee County and helping a neighboring department. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, that's what we're all, we're all in the same business. So, I mean, I gotta put that out to my fellow commissioners.
I think it's a great idea. I couldn't think of a nicer place for that boat to go.
Yeah, I'm so thrilled. I make a motion. We grant his request.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was, that was painless. As painless as it can be.
But you can't, you can't have.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you have to take Richie with you though. Take good care of it, sir.
There's no extra charge. Do we throw him in with it?
We can't give Deputy Chief Scott away.
Okay. New burn building proposal. You gotta talk to us about this.
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to the Assistant Chief.
He can't, he's a cameraman tonight. He's just a cameraman.
He's had the camera on himself the whole time anyway.
Yeah, probably.
So, burn building. Burn building has basically lived its life expectancy. We've replaced the burned ends three to four times now. We're on the fifth time. We looked at buying a commercial building and it's just too expensive, even with grants out there. I think last year, the year before, when Chief Dagel and myself went up to FDIC, we looked at it. To get one, you know, a two-story one, what we want with the plagiatic tiles is in the two-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollar range, easily. And again, no guarantee on life expectancy on it. Every so often, we would still have to change out the plagiatic tiles on the inside. So there's no guarantee on it. So what we've done is we've searched the state, talked to some people. As you know, I did some teaching throughout the state in my career. So the State Fire College has the guys who's went around United States and built these burn facilities. They have them at the State Fire College themselves. And they built them, like I said, throughout Florida and United States. We've talked to them. They came up with design. Chief Madden and myself came up with the design. It's gonna be a two-story design with a flat roof prop, a pitch roof prop, three different areas of burn cans where, or burn places in it. And they're doing it, they're doing all the prefab. It's gonna have stairs in it. It's gonna meet all the requirements that the state requires us to have as a state facility. And it's coming in at less than, you know, a third of what we're looking at with the three hundred thousand. We're at one-thirty-seven, I believe it is. Ninety-seven for the labor and the prefabbing of all the external, the windows, the doors, the stairs. We're buying the cans themselves, seven forty-foot cans locally at Tropic Trailer. In that deal, they are picking, dropping off their new ones and picking up our old ones so we don't have to pay for disposal. And then the only other thing that myself and Chief Madden have been doing the last couple of days, we've gotta separate those cans right now. So we've been out there most of, some of Wednesday, all, most of Friday, because we are up on Thursday and we were gonna go out today, but we ran out of oxygen for our cutting torches, so we'll be ready to go. They will be delivered, if this goes through, they're tentatively be delivered at the end of this week. And the following week is when they will come in and do it. So by our next meeting in August, we will have a new burn can out there.
Well, we're not the only department that uses that either.
No.
We got the training school, we've got several other.
We've got the co-op. At least three times a year, we use it throughout the district. Astero has been coming down here to use it. This past, these last two years, we've been host to the Great Florida Fire School, which is a entity that gets all of the volunteers and paid. They have two classes throughout the state of Florida, one to the north and one to the south. They approached us last year and said, we want a, we wanna keep in southwest Florida. The rooms are reasonable, the training facilities are reasonable, we don't charge them anything to come down here. We just did a TIC class with that, a thermal engineering class with it. We use it immensely. We just had back in May, the, the Florida Safety Coalition came down with all of their instructors and their clinicians to see what firefighters go through. So when they go there for PTSD or any type of peer counseling, they know exactly what firefighters are going through. They did all that work in our burn can. We did a live burn with it. We didn't take them in, but they seen what we went through. They felt the heat. They just didn't make entry. So we use the can.
Right. And budget issue, we've got the money in the budget.
Yes, sir. We're just doing the transfer.
I think it's a hundred and thirty-seven.
Any discussion?
Hundred and thirty-four, I'm sorry.
Greg, what's, what's our annual income from the outside uses?
Uh, for the fire school's the only one we get it from, from MCI. And it varies based on, you know, how many students they had. Let's go back. Two classes ago, they had like four to five students. This last class that they just graduated last month had twenty-seven, I think Eric, started with thirty-something. Started with thirty-two, dropped back down to twenty-seven because of failures. The rumor I had, the rumor I heard is they've got another full class. So it varies, but I think leasing the budget, what do we have, forty-five hundred dollars, five grand?
Just curious, I mean.
Somewhere around in there. What, what we, the, the deal is with MCI is we get ten percent per student.
But plus, they're a great resource for hiring future firefighters for us. So I mean, that's, I think the biggest benefit we get out of that is the possibility of actually hiring future.
That, and, and the other thing it does, and, and we've talked about this long when we built the first one, is it keeps our firefighters here. The next closest one is Fort Myers Fire Academy or North Naples. Problem with North Naples, even though it's closer, we're out of radio contact. You know, as soon as we hit that imaginary Collier County line, no offense, sir.
Well.
That, it, you know.
Don't get my question wrong.
The sheriff's office just doesn't.
I don't care if we make any money.
No, I get that. No, I, I.
I mean, we need it for our men.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. We use it quite a bit here.
It's the most important thing to me.
We put on numerous classes to have live fire instructors. We have, I believe, four, four live fire instructors on every class, on every shift. So if a shift wants to go out there and do it, they can use it. It's not limited to one big class.
Well, it's, it's been there for a reason.
Uh, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the burn building prop replacement, go with the plan proposed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's a no-brainer. Nice job. Good job, guys. Did you wanna stay up there and do your chief's report and jump over the chair? Yeah, no, okay. Chief Dagel?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I did just want to correct the Assistant Chief on one thing. He said it was his and Eric's idea. He should know that all the ideas are mine.
Don't let that happen again. After thirty years, you should know better.
Um, I would, I would like to recommend to the board, or actually ask the board, to approve a tentative budget, budget millage hearing for nine, nine, nineteen. Please?
Didn't we already schedule our budget meetings?
I don't, yes, they are, but I believe you have to. Yes.
Are they the same day as the meeting?
Yeah.
That's fine.
At five oh one.
At five oh one, and then we just go from that indirect, sure.
Right, at five oh one, start that meeting.
Yeah, 'cause like, this is a law that has to. And then we adjourn that one and then start the regular board meeting. It's only about a five minute, if that means.
But we need a motion.
Nine.
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 The same day as our regular.
I make the motion. We, we go with that, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The only other item I have is, he's not here right now, but the, the chaplain is having an open house with his new building off of East Terry Street this Saturday. I believe the time is eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock Saturday.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that he's, of course, all's welcome. They'll have food, that sort of thing, so. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Chief. Deputy Chief Scott? Deputy Chief Madden has his reporting here, but he's welcome to just step up to the mic and give a shout-out to anybody. Okay. Public comment?
Alex Grandy, eleven eight fifty-one, East Terry Street. Um, the potential vacancy. I know Bill Longheart. I served with him on the, well, I know him very well from the, his financial expertise on the city council. And I think if I were sitting where you are, I would make a recommendation to ask if Bill Longheart was still interested. I know he was, he ran against somebody, okay, for, all right. And he, he's a very good numbers person, financial person, so that's my recommendation.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks for coming.